Okay, I think we have our audio visual stuff ready and it's seven o'clock. So I will call the meeting of the common council of the city of Plattville to order. It's Tuesday, August the 13th. It's seven o'clock and we're in the council chambers in Plattville. We'll start with roll call.
Isaac Shanley?
Yeah.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Barbara Stockhausen?
Here.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Robin Klein?
Here.
We have two special presentations tonight. I think we'll flip them around and we'll start with our new superintendent of schools, Jim Babel, to introduce himself.
Good evening, everyone. Jim Babel, the new superintendent of schools here at Plattville. And it's an honor to speak in front of the council this evening. I have been on the job since July the first. My family and I, we moved to town in the middle of June. To say excited would be an understatement for the opportunity to serve the community and serve the students in the Plattville area. One of the things that I picked up on when we were searching the job and the position was the importance of, and the recognition of, the importance of the city and the school and how they work together and how we have so many overlapping services and then how we can mutually benefit each other. And then when we place what we have, the campus, in on that equation, I think we have a wonderful setup for our success in the future. And so if there are any questions that the council would like to have of me, now would be an excellent time that I'd be glad to field them.
I have some questions. What's your background?
My background's certainly in education. So I started off as a middle school social studies teacher for 11 years in Bosqueville, which is my hometown. And then from '06 to '08, I went up to Prairie Farm for my first principal position. And that was a wonderful experience because it's a very small district in northwest Wisconsin, 300 students, and my job there was pre-K through 12. So having the teaching experience in the middle school, high school, my first principal experience being pre-K through 12, and that allowed me to come back and compete for a position at Cuba City where for a year I was an elementary principal. And then for eight years, I was the high school principal. Started to want to grow and took some classes. And Adams Friendship took a chance on me two years ago. And they offered me my first superintendency. We were there for two years. And when we were at Cuba City, my wife worked on campus. She worked in Brigham Hall. And when this opportunity came up, we just knew we would go for it full speed. And the stars aligned. And my wife was able to get another job back on campus. We have three boys. Our oldest graduated from Whitewater and he's working Appleton. And our middle boy, Brady, will be a junior at the high school. And our middle, our youngest son, Simon, will be an eighth grader at the middle school. So a lot of southwest Wisconsin experience up and down the spectrum as far as age groups. Is there any other information that you would like?
I was wondering where you received your advanced degrees?
Well, the bachelor's was from UW Plattville. And my master's in education was from St. Mary's in the Twin Cities. And from there, I went and achieved certificates and licensure. So the principalship, that was from the Good Sisters at Silver Lake in Manitowoc. My director of instruction was Silver Lake, Manitowoc. And my superintendency is from Viterbo in La Crosse.
I'm just curious what you would say are your main focuses or goals setting out for your first year in Plattville?
Well, when you, when I enter a district with the success and the caliber of Plattville, what you're really looking to do is continue that pursuit of greatness. And there isn't a real need to just dramatically change everything head over heels. I have to learn what works and then try and offer my expertise to help us advance and grow. Certainly, I am responsible for the safety of 1,500 of our students. And they need to come to a school in which they can learn and be able to take those risks and grow and then challenge them. And the hope is when they receive their diploma, that they have everything open to them, that we've exposed them to different opportunities, that they can pursue different options, they can go whatever schooling they want, and in the workforce, military, whatever it is, but they're ready for it. And one of the big challenges for people our age is that we were able to graduate high school, go to some form of schooling, and then we could really live in that career. And if we wanted to, we could move, but we didn't have to. What our students are facing now, their big challenge, is because knowledge is improving so much and technology is improving so fast, let's say they graduate high school and they get a licensure in some trade. That trade will turn over in five years completely. So they'll have to be able to continually reinvent and unlearn and relearn. And that's a skill as a district that we really have to focus on with our kids. The term that I throw around a lot is we have to teach our kids to be nimble and get out and then continually learn. And it's tough for us because the older we get, the less nimble we want to be. But it's a good challenge. Anything else?
I have no more questions. Robin took my last one.
That was Robin.
Very well. Thank you. Thank you. We look forward to a wonderful partnership.
And we look forward to, it's become our practice to have some joint meetings. So we'll look forward to having a joint meeting in the future of the council and the school board.
Agreed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a special presentation proclamation recognizing the city manager, Karen Kurt. So I'm going to the other microphone. So Karen came here about four years ago. And I'm thinking that most people thought, what's a big city girl like that going to do in a little town like Plattville? And I think you'd all probably agree with me that the big city girl has done a lot for us. And I've, I have my copy of 53818 that just came out today in the newspaper. And there is a guest column in it called, "Why I'm Excited for Plattville's Future." And it's none other than Karen who has been interviewed and answered some questions. Over the years, I've heard people say, you know, what's great about Plattville is our quality of life. We have like the best quality of life. And then you ask people, well, what does that mean? And it's really, really hard to define. But I would challenge you to read this article in this 53818 because I think it embodies what is the quality of life in Plattville. So I'm not going to take away the thunder of the article. I'm going to expect people to read it. But please do because it has some fabulous things to say about our community. And frankly, as we go about trying to replace this city manager, it'll be a guide for us. So Karen, if you'd come forward, I don't know if I can read all this or not. But we do have a proclamation recognizing Karen Kurt's outstanding service and dedication to the city of Plattville. It has a lot of those whereas's. So we start out, whereas Karen Kurt has faithfully served as city manager for the city of Plattville since 2015. And whereas Ms. Kurt has provided leadership and guidance to the common council through new council member orientations and numerous workshops which have informed and strengthened the council's understanding of the various issues facing the city. And whereas Ms. Kurt has invested her years of experience in the city's employees through her development of the city's recruitment and onboarding process and her insight provided to all levels of city staff, as well as her introduction of a comprehensive compensation plan. And whereas Ms. Kurt has provided effective leadership through challenging financial circumstances, including guiding the implementation of a long-range financial plan and development of a comprehensive budget book. And whereas Ms. Kurt has made a significant and lasting contribution to the Plattville downtown through her involvement in the completion of the library block and Pioneer Ford redevelopment projects. And whereas Ms. Kurt designed and implemented a strategy to improve the city's image through new signs at the city's entrances and parks, banners on Main Street, and the annual spruce up day involving staff volunteers. And whereas Ms. Kurt worked with council and management teams to develop and implement a strategic plan and annual city goals. And whereas Ms. Kurt created an atmosphere of teamwork and collaboration throughout the city, including various city gatherings, most memorably the annual holiday breakfast. And whereas Ms. Kurt has demonstrated a remarkable ability to inspire and bring out the best in those around her, both in Plattville and throughout southwest Wisconsin. I know I'd do that. Got through. Now therefore, I, Barb Doss, council president of the city of Plattville, on behalf of the council and city employees, both past and present, do hereby wish to express our sincere appreciation for your dedication and service. And as one can see, we frankly hate to lose her to Iowa. Iowa, of all places. Sorry, Bennett.
I should have brought some Kleenexes up. I will truly treasure this. And, you know, I wasn't really sure when I took the job how I would fit in here either coming from a much larger place in Minnesota. But the community welcomed me with open arms. And when people have asked me about my experience, how's it going down there? I have told them that I can't say enough about the council I've worked with. And I am going to call out Barb and Eileen in particular because they're the ones that really spend the most time with the city manager, as having been council president and vice president and nurturing me along. But then also our fantastic staff. And you're nothing without staffs.
And now we'll go on with our business at hand tonight. So the first item on our agenda is consideration of the consent calendar. We can approve all of these on a single motion due to their routine nature. If you want something pulled from this list, let me know. Otherwise, it would be the council minutes from July 23rd, payment of bills, the financial reports for July. I have no appointments to boards and commissions, although there are plenty of vacancies. Licenses tonight, a Class B, temporary Class B license to serve fermented malt beverages. That license to St. Mary's Church for the St. Mary's School Community Block Party Saturday, August 31st, from 5:00 to 10:00. A temporary Class B to serve malted, fermented malt beverages to the Plattville J.C.'s. For the Legion Park for Dairy Days on Friday, September 6th through Sunday, September 8th. And a temporary Class B license to serve fermented malt beverages and wines. This one issued to the Friends of the Rallo Mining and Rallo Jameson Museums for the quote-unquote "bottom-of-the-mine blast," end quote, which will be held Saturday, October 19th, from 4:00 to 9:00. There are several one- and two-year operator licenses to serve alcohol. And we have street closing permits, one for Bonson Street, let's see there, one for Court Street and Bonson Street for the St. Mary's School Festival. One for Court, another for Court Street and Bonson Street for the St. Mary's Parish Festival and Games. That one's Sunday, September 22nd. One for Hickory Street between Pine and Greenwood Streets for the St. Augustine's Block Party at the beginning of school, which is Wednesday, September 4th, from 4:00 to 8:00. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll vote.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, citizens, comments, observations, and petitions, if any. And I believe there's at least one person who wants to speak. We do have a registration sheet in the back. So you'll need to fill that out and then you can come to the microphone. Okay? Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Otherwise, while I'm waiting for that, I will speak on behalf of our student, the UW Plattville Student Senate President, Benjamin, who happens to attend our meetings often. He sent me a text today that said he would be unable to attend tonight, but if he, he wanted everyone to know that the first day of classes is September 4th and new student move-in starts on August 31st. So he's asking everyone to be patient during this transition period into the new academic year. And so on behalf of Benjamin, we welcome UW Plattville students. And for those who might come again sometime, if you want to speak and if any of the people in the audience want to speak tonight on behalf of anything on the agenda, you should also fill out a green sheet. You can just give it to me as you go by. And I'm sorry. Okay. Okay. You can go ahead and come to the microphone. And then just introduce yourself and get your, give your address.
Okay. I'm, my name's Paul Alderson. I own a property at, on Southwest Road. And I live on Seventh Avenue.
Do you have house numbers?
Oh, 6772.
He lives at 6772 Seventh Avenue.
Seventh Avenue.
Yeah.
And the property?
The 465 Southwest Road.
Okay, thank you.
So, all right. I have five minutes total or five minutes per topic?
Five minutes total.
Okay. There are multiple things I want to talk about, but the reason I come down here and didn't put it off to another council meeting was the impact that I believe that the UWP building is going to have on the community. We already got impacted by this one time when they built the last dorm. And I was directly impacted by the need to have parking permits for the front of my own house. So the spiel goes, and it's a bunch of lies, from the UWP because they don't want to spend the money to build a parking lot. They say, oh, we're gonna build this and it's only going to destroy some parking. But don't worry, our, our numbers are going down. But part of that building process is building 400 beds in a dorm. So which is it? Are you going to have 400 additional students? Or are you gonna not? I mean, it's kind of silly to build those and then not fill them. And if there's 400 beds in today's society, that's 400 cars. And I noticed that we had already thought it was a good idea, but it's a terrible idea. And how do you address this? Well, you either make them prove their numbers without just some off-the-cuff claim, which facts argue against it, or you make them build a parking lot. And that's what I want to say.
You're looking at the engineering building being added on.
And a dorm.
Losing 16 lots.
Yep. And then the claim that, ah, the parking that's there already is fine. We didn't fill as many students as we wanted to, but yet we're going to build a dorm of 400 more student occupants.
You know, the request currently is to build an academic building, not a dormitory.
Right. But isn't there an extension to it?
To the building? It's an academic building. It's not a dormitory.
Okay.
And later tonight on the agenda, there is a part, so I encourage you to stay because there's going to be a presentation on Susquehannet Hall, the academic building.
All right.
But to my knowledge, and when, when the UWP...
As far as I'm concerned, they still owe us a parking lot for their other dorm.
For their other, okay.
All right.
Well, that's fine. Okay. Thank you for registering your opinion.
All right.
Okay. All right. Okay. Great. Thank you. All right, any other citizens, comments, observations, or petitions? Then we go to reports. There were several reports, there were reports in the packet. License committee, that would be Eileen, Isaac, myself?
Nothing to add.
We have nothing, I have nothing to add. We have other reports, the water and sewer financial report, the airport financial report, and department progress reports. Any questions?
Department progress, have we had that?
Yes.
Okay. I have a question for the city manager. Maybe my last one. And also the chief of police. In July, you were to have a meeting, each of you separately, with a person concerned about dog problem here in Plattville. And my question is, was there a resolution to that issue? I put on a phone call to the person and persons involved, but they have not answered back yet.
We did have actually several meetings, one jointly, the city manager and I. And I think I know what canine issue you're referring to.
Next to the Oeary grave?
Yes.
Place.
Yes, we had several meetings and I had a chance to have a follow-up with one of the concerned parties within the last week. And they indicated that things are kind of at a status quo.
Okay. And the city manager, you have any addition?
Anything additional?
Okay. Thank you. This question comes up for two reasons. One, because I've receiving a phone call from a person. And two, because it says underneath complaints, animal complaints, had 167 in 2019 and 137 for all of 2018. So it kind of hit a button with me. Thank you. And the other question I have is for Howard. And it's a question related to Alden Street. It says you put concrete underneath part of this, of the construction. So my question is, where was the concrete put? Was that put underneath the portion going on Alden? Or the portion going under the building area there, the landscaping, the parking lots, QuickTrip, and so forth? Which are you talking about as far as construction?
We're doing that in two sections, actually. The first portion was from about the middle of the driveway in front of Nutrition World down to about 30 feet or so underneath the QuickTrip parking lot. So it went from Nutrition World underneath Alden Avenue to there. And then later this week, we're going to put additional concrete in the flow line further north up through the culvert that goes underneath the Nutrition World building. The issue is that this is a, it's a metal culvert pipe and the bottom is mostly rusted out. And so in order to add a few more years of life to this tube, we, we put in a flow line, a concrete flow line for it.
What does a concrete flow line mean?
What it means is, is a place where the water flows in the tube. It replaces the bottom of the tube that was rusted out essentially. And it, we took it down as far as we felt we needed to for where it was, where it became a better tube. I mean, not, not, not brand-new by any stretch of the imagination, but, but more substantial bottom in that culvert.
Is that buried all the way up to Pine Street, north?
No, there's, there's some daylight or actual ditch going upstream from behind the Nutrition World building. It goes behind the Wonder Lube and a couple of those other buildings. And then it's back underneath the street at the intersection of Pine and Water.
Your comment, yeah, two comments. Project needed in five years. You're talking about go along the link to that pipe up to the open area and then beyond the open area going up to underneath Main Street? It comes in under Main Street, underneath the buildings there. Years ago, there was a concern brought up by one of the owners there about the amount of erosion that taken place from his building pillars. So are you talking about a project then, that whole length, within a few years to repair that? Because I heard a number of years ago, and I believe I've talked to you briefly about this, that that area in general is eroded, corroded, rusted out. It's kind of, it's kind of a thing that, it's a hidden problem waiting to happen.
It is, it is a hidden problem waiting to happen. We need to look seriously at budgeting in the next five to 10 years to replace portions of that pipe as budget will allow, probably from the Super 8 all the way on up to underneath the Nutrition World building and then where it goes back underneath, underground again.
What about underneath the new QuickTrip?
The tube is actually out between the street and the building itself, between the street and the canopy in the, in the parking lot area. So if we ended up, if or when we end up replacing that, it should not impact the building itself or the, or the pumps or anything like that. Same with the other buildings further south. It's all in the parking lot out, out front of those buildings. The only building that sits on top of the tube itself is the Nutrition World building.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on the department progress reports?
This would be for Howard. And we spoke about this about two or three weeks ago. This would be the Camp Street sidewalk. So how are we coming on with CenturyLink with that? With school starting in about three weeks or so? Now, we're still sitting there with sidewalk that's not being done. Loungers moved on to other projects, put their stuff away. And here we have three different sections of power poles sitting in the way.
We are working the best we can with CenturyLink. It's been difficult to work with them. Today, they finally were able to get to Lewis Street and finish removing some of the, some of the phone lines from the old poles and remove the old poles that were, that were in the new width of the street and in, in the middle of the sidewalk. As far as I know, their plan is to continue to, to work on Lewis, Court, and Camp Street to finish those, those up as soon as possible. What, I do not have a timeline.
But the city's work, it's not, it's not the city's responsibility, it's Century Link's in all of those cases?
That's correct. Specifically, Mr. Shanley's talking about the Camp Street sidewalk. There, there are three old utility poles that are in the way... There, there are three old utility poles that are in the way of finishing that sidewalk project. What has to happen is Century Link needs to come in and remove their, their lines from those poles. And, and they need to remove the poles so that we can complete the work. We've been trying to work with them for many weeks now. It's been quite difficult.
Yep, I did drive that last night and saw that, so. All right, well, thank you. Anybody else with any other questions? Then we'll move into the action portion of our agenda, and the first action item is the Development Agreement Amendment and Penalty Fee Waiver for 535 West Cedar and 420 440 Southwest Road. This is return, it was tabled at the last meeting. So Joe, would you like to start?
Yes. Yeah, those properties that you mentioned were obtained by the city in 2013 through a legal judgment. We turned around and then sold them for redevelopment purposes after that. The, the three that you mentioned, 565 West Cedar, 420 Southwest Road, and 440 Southwest Road were purchased by River to Valley Initiatives. The city had a development agreement with them to kind of cover what the redevelopment was gonna occur on those properties and when it was gonna take place. Then there were penalties if those projects were not completed by the date specified. River to Valley has not completed those properties. At this point, they're no longer interested in trying to complete those properties, so they're selling the properties. Dressler Properties LLC has interest in purchasing all three of those. However, the development agreement still applies, so Dressler would like to have those redevelop, or those development agreements modified, obviously, because the deadlines are no longer applicable. The new construction that they're proposing is, is similar to what was proposed by River to Valley, but there are some differences, so to kind of start with a clean slate, we'd like to have some new development agreements that covers what's gonna be done with those properties. It's, the, the new ones, they're in your packet, you saw them. We had them last time late. But they're basically modeled after what we had last time with obviously some differences on the dates and the construction details. So we'd like to get those new agreements approved with Dressler. The other issue is that the 565 West Cedar Street property has multiple liens and encumbrances on that property, including some penalty payments that the city has on the property due to the construction not being completed when it was supposed to be completed. So our, our fee amount is $6,124.84. You add in mortgage and some other deep back taxes, et cetera. All of those fees are actually more than the sale price of the property. So first, community investments, excuse me, Forward Community Investments is the primary lender. They have a mortgage on that property, and to try to expedite the sale of that property, they're asking the city to waive that penalty payment to allow the sale to proceed. So Dressler, we've got two, people from Dressler here to answer any questions if you have any. Forward Community Investments was going to be here, and then they had a conflict at last minute, so they were not able to attend. But they were able to answer one question that came up last time. There was some concern about the penalty payments that are also in place on the Southwest Road properties. There is no request to waive those. Forward Community Investments is not involved in those properties anymore. They no longer have a mortgage, so they're have no interest, and there's no request to waive those penalties. So we're only dealing with the penalty payment on the Cedar Street property, which is the $6,124.88. And then at the last meeting, there was some more requests for more information on the redevelopment that Dressler is proposing, so we do have floor plans and a better description of the properties for Cedar Street. We did, he did not have time to develop floor plans or additional information on the structure for the Southwest Road properties, but it would be a three-unit building similar to what River to Valley had proposed. Any questions?
Okay, we'll take questions for, does anybody have any questions on, first of all, the Development Agreement Amendments? Of Joe, does anybody have any questions of Joe on that? I think we'll probably start with the Development Agreement Amendments. This is really two issues. One, Development Agreement Amendments with the Dresslers. Second issue would be Penalty Fee, Fee, Fee Waiver requested by Forward Community Investments. Questions of Joe.
Are we gonna, are we gonna vote separately on 565 and separately on 420, 440?
It'll depend on who makes the motion and how it's made. How's that? I do believe that the developer is in the audience. Does, does the, this isn't a public hearing, but do the developers wish to speak?
I do have one question for Zach, the developer.
Well, if, if you're gonna, so if council members have questions of the developers, then we're gonna have the developers come to the podium. It appears that there's gonna be a question of you. So you'll need to come to the podium. And your name and your address.
Name and address. My name is Zach Dressler, owner of Dressler Properties LLC. I live in Keeler. Peel Box 357.
Here's the only question I have, Zach, is, so the one in Cedar Street, it looks like the property's gonna sit in there sideways? Because of the setbacks?
Uh, no, we should be able to meet requirements in the setbacks. Excuse me, you said sideways?
Yeah.
Yes, sideways, sorry. I was thinking kittywampus, but that makes sense.
It will fit either way, by the way, I did.
It does fit either way, but it's much tighter the other way, so I think it would look best.
Well, it can't fit either way. Thirty-six plus five, and five is beyond the forty feet what they can build on, so.
It's a substandard lot, so they can actually go closer to the lot lines and, so.
It's a fifty-foot frontage on the lot, is that correct, though?
Correct.
That's what I remember reading.
Other questions of the developer?
Actually, on the Cedar Street property, there's also a curb cut, so are you going to continue to use that as your access to the lot? And what, is that where the parking will be?
Um, I would propose parking just up front. I think the, where the curb cut is now is on a higher elevation. I may propose moving it to the lower elevation just to serve the site a little better, but I think it would work where it's at, so I guess it's not a requirement, but.
That, I guess, I'm curious where the, where the parking will be if.
It would be right up front, I mean.
Right, in front of the house. And, and Joe, that's.
Slightly off to the side, kind of like Division Street, I believe.
I don't think, I didn't think we could have front yard parking.
You can have parking in the street yard, it just can't exceed more than twenty-five percent of the street yard or twenty feet wide. So he could go up to twenty feet wide.
Be paved parking?
Yes.
Okay. I would prefer that the front of the house faces Cedar Street, simply because every other property on Cedar Street faces Cedar Street, but I understand the difficulty when it's a narrow lot. I do understand that.
All right.
Yeah.
It's not other question, but it was just a thought that it would allow better access to the backyard, because obviously with substandard lot, you're at a five-foot setback, it's pretty hard to get anything besides yourself past the side of the house, you know, so.
And I know the one on Adams Street, I think, is the, the other house that's set in at an angle. There's a ranch down there, so. Okay, those are the questions I have.
I, I note that, I was on the original group that made these awards, and one of the strongest points of these original development agreements was that these would be owner-occupied properties. And the original intent on 565 West Cedar was not only an owner-occupied property, but one with a fair market value of $165,000. Now I see we're moving to college rental with a fair market value of $125,000. I looked at the 2010 census data for Grant County, and the median value of owner-occupied housing units in Grant County in 2010 was $137,000. So I'm a little concerned about the fact that we would be approving an agreement that, I, I have to wonder, what does that mean? A fair market value of $125,000? It's, you know, I think we've talked to people who are developers, and, you know, they tell us they can't even build anything for less than $200,000.
That's probably a little low. I mean, it was probably taken off of earlier estimates, and, I mean, it might have been undershot slightly from the beginning, because I'm a contractor myself, and obviously I can do things more efficiently and more reasonably than the average person. It doesn't affect the value, obviously, but, you know, it may have been undershot, like I said, right from the beginning, you know, it's maybe more like $140,000 or, you know, something like that, you know? Because you're correct, you don't get much for.
Yeah, I mean, I have to, and when I see fair market value of $125,000, I have to say to myself, do we really want a house like that in Platteville? I mean.
Well, talking about a brand-new structure that's serving a purpose, and, I mean, it's not gonna be some shady one-bedroom. You know, I think I'm still adding value, and it'll be a nice place, I mean.
So you wouldn't mind if that was bumped up to $145,000?
Uh, no.
Okay, other questions?
I guess the, the other question I would ask is, I drove by the house on Center Street and also the one on Chestnut that you have built, okay? And honestly, it's pretty sparse-looking. There, there isn't much there for, I'll say, curb appeal. It's, it's clean, you know, you have the front porch, and then center you have the little side deck, and, and I don't object to any of that. I think that, you know, if you take a first look at it, that's fine, but then when I start looking at the houses around it, especially on Chestnut, I see that they have trees, or they have bushes, or they have something that kind of makes the house a little softer. And so, I'm a landlord. I know I don't like to trim things around houses, so I understand it's much easier not to put those kinds of things in, but I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I, I really would like to have something to sort of, I don't know, some kind of greenery to make it look a little more like it fits into the neighborhood. And also, I, I have to say the, the ones on, the one on South Chestnut, you angled the house, so when I drive by, I'm looking at the side of the house. And every other house on Chestnut, I see the front of the house. I see the front entrance door, and again, I understand why you probably did it because of the parking. But I, I, I guess when we get to South Chest, or Southwest Road, I would really prefer having the front of the house face Southwest Road, as opposed to having the front of the house sort of in the side or the back.
South, you, you're talking about the multi-unit?
Right.
Oh, for sure. I mean, the multi-unit, there'll be a driveway alongside.
Going in the back for parking.
Utilize some of the depth of the, you know, with these substandard lots, it's so tight, it's pretty tough to get a driveway all the way around the house, and you're talking a lot, a small lot beside, so I mean, by the time you pave a driveway to go around the house and a parking lot in the back, it's gonna get spending.
And, and I, again, I understand that, but I'm saying that I, I really would like to see a little something.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not.
Decorative, greenery, something.
I, I definitely hear you, and that's, could be forthcoming, you know, I mean, that's in the progress. I know it's a, something that could be done in the future. I mean, I'd like to see him, I don't mind shrubs and trees either, but, you know, it all takes time and effort.
I understand that, but again, if you look at the other surrounding properties, usually they have something that, that sort of softens the house. It's not just, yeah.
But to think it was better than what was there.
Is that the house where there's been the, not retention wall, but the, the black erosion?
Are you talking Chestnut, or are you talking? I don't.
Uh, maybe it wasn't. Maybe it's a drone.
I don't think that's it.
Okay. I, I'll move on to 420 440 Southwest Road. So again, originally, this was supposed to be townhouses that would be for, wouldn't be owner-occupied, two and a half baths, three townhouses, kitchen, living room, dining room, laundry rooms, those kinds of things. And now I see that it may be a new building that's either a three-unit, three-bedroom building, which I don't, does that mean three units each with one bedroom, or three units each with three bedrooms? Or a four-unit, two-bedroom building? So I guess I need explanation of what it is that you intend to build, and how many bedrooms that would be.
I guess, I don't know for, for sure if it's gonna be a three-bedroom, three-unit, meaning three different units and three bedrooms in each unit.
So it's nine bedrooms.
Nine bedrooms. Or a four-unit, two-bedroom, which would be eight bedrooms. So I'm kind of, I feel I can fit both on there with requirements and my setbacks, and allowing enough room for a driveway. But to come up with that plan and the time and energy and, you know, it's just, I haven't had the time to actually do it yet, you know? Plus the cost, I don't know. It was a pretty good cost to incur just for you guys to say no, you know, so I mean, yeah, I feel like I'm modeling it similar to what they, River to Valley's, besides the owner-occupied. It's basically the same structure, I'd say, or, you know, close to it.
So, Joe, there's adequate parking, there's adequate space on that side to accommodate the not, the parking requirements for nine bedrooms?
Yes.
Because I, I don't know what those requirements are, but I know that, I know that my fellow councilmen here would ask that question if I didn't ask it.
Yeah, the, the 420 Southwest Road is very deep, so there'd be room to put parking behind the building.
And that's not a water hole back there? It doesn't pond water? I've never been back there to see, but, okay.
Is all the parking on the lot? Are you also including the street parking?
I would put in the parking required of the bedrooms, basically. So I would count on some street parking, I guess, you know, you required, I believe, three-quarters of spot per bedroom. Correct, so I mean, I, you know.
In the, in the agreement, it says he'll provide off-street parking to meet the code requirements. I don't know what that number is, because we don't know the number of bedrooms at this point, but he'll have to meet.
Well, if he has, let's say, eight bedrooms, how many parking spots will be on the lot?
Requirements.
Pardon?
He'll have to meet the code requirements.
What's the code requirement?
For the two-bedroom units, he said? Then it'd be one per bedroom.
Six, I mean, we're gonna round up, probably it'd be around six bedroom or six lots.
He's gonna need either eight or nine spaces, depending on which option he picks. Off-street, on the property.
On the property?
Yes.
Eight or nine for an eight or nine bedroom? That's one per bedroom.
Or until he's put in four-bedroom units.
There you go. See, I learned something. At least I did.
Okay, other questions about these development agreements? Any other questions? Barb, Robin?
No, I just would like a comment. Isaac, you sent a letter to us. Do you have any additional information, or do you want to respond?
Well, the letter was regarding the non-performance penalty. As for the, I didn't send a letter regarding the developer's agreement. Based on if he meets all the city codes for zoning, parking, you know, the codes are, I've seen his work before in Platteville and other areas, and he does good work. So those, you know, as long as he meets other requirements, I have no problem with the developments agreement, but I feel these should be voted on as two separate, um, two separate issues. One for the penalty waiver, and we could probably do two for the developer's agreement, which I would be in favor of both of them. Same builder, same type of construction, so.
So that's what we have under discussion right now, are the development agreements. We don't have the other under discussion. So right now, the question I asked, if there are any additional questions about the development agreements. Personally, like I said before, I'd like to see the value on the Cedar Street increase to at least $140,000.
I think he's light on his, on his value. I mean, he's probably just estimating, putting a number on there, but based on the other properties that he's built, and I've seen what's sold recently for new construction, if he builds a similar to those, he's light on that $125,000. He's probably in the $145,000 to $155,000 range, to be honest with you.
So, so then there wouldn't be any.
No change in that, no.
There would be no reason not to change it, then? So do I hear any?
I make a motion to approve both developer agreements for both SEAMERS or SCAM. I make a motion to approve both developer agreements for both Seamer's, our scheme, um Cedar Street and for Southwest Road. As well, or as long as they meet, again, all code, re- building requirements and zoning requirements.
Second.
Barb, can I interrupt you? You have to make a motion to remove it from the table first.
Oh, I guess we have to have a motion to remove it from the table before, we should have had that way before Candace, we should have had that.
It's okay, as as long as you take no action prior to doing that.
Okay, so first of all, we have to have a motion to remove from the table. Uh, this discussion, this item.
I I move what you just said.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to take it off the table, we'll vote.
Second by.
Robin.
Robin and. Shanley.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Stockhausen.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Okay, now, we'll have Isaac's motion.
My motion was to recommend both developer's agreements with rest of their properties regarding the properties on both five sixty five Cedar Street. And for the properties at four twenty and four forty Southwest Road. As long as meeting all the city and state building codes as well as zoning codes and relating to the required parking.
Second.
We have a second. Um. I'd like to make a friendly amendment. That the developer provide a land based on the uh. Comments of Councilor Nichols, that the developer provide a landscaping plan. That includes trees and shrubs around these buildings.
I'll second that.
We'll vote on the amendment first. Uh, Eileen seconded.
This is a vote on your friendly amendment?
This is the vote on the amendment to add landscaping.
Shanley.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Stockhausen.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, uh, any other friendly amendments?
No, but can I ask a question for discussion on our motion?
Sure.
Maybe I should have asked it before the motion, but before I vote. Is there any more that you can offer to the conversation about owner occupied versus a rental, just for consideration? Um, I assume we're drop, we're allowing him to drop the owner occupied piece.
Dropped on, yes, it has been.
Just so it sits right in my head, is there any. Uh, extra argument for why that house, that neighborhood, we are okay with that?
If you're not okay with it, I guess you know.
I I don't know that I'm not okay with that, I mean, it's definitely college rentals there, it's pretty close to campus. I'm not sure that I would choose to live right there, but I know we like to have a mix when we can have a mix, so I guess I just wondered if anyone else wanted to weigh in on that.
Sure he would rent to anybody, as long as they came up with the the price, doesn't have, I'm sure you just got on there's college rentals, but. If a family came in and saw a brand new house, four bedrooms, two bathrooms, a family room, I'm sure they'd rent there and he'd rent it to them.
Not sure what the backyard of that goes up against anyhow, is it a nice quiet space in the backyard?
Property you're speaking of?
West Cedar.
Oh. Um, I haven't spent a lot of time there, but I mean, it's, I'm not sure exactly where the property line is yet, but seems to be a, you know, decent backyard. I mean, yeah, like Isaac said, if, it's not just college rentals, I mean, I rent to anybody that meets requirements, I mean. And there are new, there'll be new places, so I mean, I feel like they'll be desirable, so.
It's a nice park and it's not a super busy street, but it is definitely college rentals nearby, so, okay.
Okay, any other questions before we vote on the motion? Okay, then we have a motion made by Isaac, seconded by Barb with an amendment made by me, seconded by Eileen. To approve these development agreements in uh, for both five sixty five West Cedar and four twenty four forty Southwest Road. Uh, both to include landscaping plans, so we'll vote. Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I think that's your section of this. All right, now we're gonna move on to the second part of the question of this particular uh. Item, and that is the penalty, the penalty fee waiver request offered. By, by. Forward Community Investments. So Forward Community Investments is the current owner of this property?
Uh, River to Valley is the current owner, Forward Community Investments has a mortgage on the property.
But they make the request, are they somehow having to pay the fees if they wanna sell the property?
So, uh, yeah, the, they're the primary lender to River to Valley on their other construction projects. The new house that they built on Division Street and the remodeling on Division Street. This property was used as collateral as part of that overall larger financing, so that's how this got pulled into it. Um, they're basically in foreclosure mode on the Division Street, the new Division Street House. Um, frankly, I think they know they're gonna lose uh money on that property by the time it's sold. So they're trying to reduce some of their losses in this project as best they can, so they're. They know the, the sale price is not adequate to cover all the encumbrances that I mentioned, so they're trying to. Reduce their losses on the overall. Sale of these properties. So that's why they're making the request.
Well, it seems to me that River to Valley Initiative should be paying the six thousand, that amp, well. Notification about this total cost. So that, uh, I'm making the assumption they're not in bankruptcy, bankruptcy yet, and they should be able to pay it. Uh. They have other properties?
I I think their other properties are the reason Forward Community Investments is not involved any longer on the Southwest Road property. There, and there was another financial institution involved as well. They made a trade with another property that the River to Valley has in Prairie de Sheen, so. I don't know, I mean, I can't speak to River to Valley, but I I don't think they have the funds available to pay it either, so. Um. That's why, to to expedite the sale, this is what they're requesting to get the project to proceed, otherwise. I'm not sure anybody knows where those funds are gonna come from.
I'm just gonna go back to my comments at the last council meeting. I stated that we should waive these fees. I realize there's a question regarding the previous development agreement, that they are to pay these. Except if we don't get them waived, then the development doesn't take place and therefore we won't have. The buildings we want and we don't have any tax base. So we, I think we should do a one-time only waiver. Um, on these fees, so that we can have the developer build buildings and proceed with. The sale and the complex system with the other lending institution. So that's my concern.
As I stated at the last meeting, this was a deal that was between the River Valley Initiatives and the city, not with the lenders, so. If they're having issues with their lender to pay off these fees, that should be between the two of them. The city's owed this money, we've already lost. This much money plus probably even more money from not taxes, utilities, water and sewer. Plus, again, as I said before, the mowing, the snow removal and stuff. Um, Barbie just said a one-time. The problem was doing it with a one-time, then the next time, another person will come in, then it's, there's another one, and you continuously keep going down the road of doing this. So, um, I think they're, they've got other properties that, you know, they can work with their lender on putting them in those areas and not this one here. Again, as I said in the last meeting, the city can't keep giving out money if they don't bring in the money that's owed to them.
Have we played out an estimate of if we stick to the fee and their ability or the possibility of. Paying that fee and what, like what teeth do we have to get that fee from them at any point?
Um, like I said, I I don't think anybody feels comfortable that River to Valley has any, any ability to pay this fee on their own. Um, that's why Forward Community Investments is making the request. Uh, as far as the city, I mean, we don't have any recourse, we can put this fee, it'll stay on the property. Um, as a lien. If uh, sale doesn't go through, we won't get paid, but it'll stay as a lien until the property is sold, if there's enough money in the sale price to pay it. If not, I'm not sure how we would get our money out. But the, the fees will keep accruing, is the other issue.
Or the bank forwards it on to the new buyer and ups the price or tries a new sale. Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, either the, the, the bank's gonna ta- take a, a bigger loss on their invest.
Sorry, but I'd like.
Bank, I mean Forward Community Investment.
I'd like to see the, the lender take the loss, not the city.
I look at the amount that is actually owed and I look at the, uh, what the lot was appraised at and what the offer is on the lot, and I think between the three entities, not the city, but. Uh, River to Valley, um Forward Community Investments and possibly the purchaser, potential purchaser. That between the three of them, I think they could come up with the additional six thousand one hundred and twenty four dollars and eighty four cents. So I tend to agree that the city should not be the one who forfeits this amount of money simply because we, as a city, have honored our commitment. And if the other entities did not honor the commitment, that I don't think that that should mean that we should just say, oh, well, that's fine, I agree with Isaac. I think we should stay with the uh, with the understanding that the commitment was made and it was not. Completed, and so there is now a fine and the fa- paid, not by the city of Platteville. And that may mean that the property does not get sold to the buyer that we've been talking to this evening. And it may sit there, and I think that Barb is absolutely right, it could sit there. That may be something that we.
And Isaac is right, if it keeps growing, the fees keep growing, when are we going to see the money?
Uh, you're right, and Isaac is right, and I still would say that I agree with Isaac, I think in this case, uh, I think between the three entities, I should be able to come up with that amount of money to. Get the property sold.
Any other comments, or is there a motion?
I might just throw it out again, is there any reason we don't just do a percentage of the fee so that we don't waive the idea that we. You know, our development agreements mean nothing, but we can maybe make it more palatable for the bank and the current. If we were to at least reduce the amount of the fee?
Again, if you do it for this one, again, in the future, another guy comes in or group comes in and. It's not quite working, I'd like to do what you did the last time, you know, so if you don't stand by the developer's agreement, what's the point of having them? So, and putting these penalties on there, if you're not gonna enforce them, you might as well not put them on there in the first place.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
I have a question. Joe, do you, uh, can you tell us, was this an unusual type of development agreement, or do we have a lot of development agreements that would have these types of penalties?
Uh, we, I guess we first came up with this format for the penalty payment with the Kalmbach properties, so we had this. Uh, penalty in place for all fifteen properties, I believe it was.
Fifteen, okay.
So it's just, the, all, all the other ones were redeveloped as proposed on time, so it was not an issue, it was just these three.
That's just these three properties, four, four twenty, four forty, and we don't have a fee waiver request on that one of the fifteen? All the other, the thirteen of the fifteen are gone, do we have any other developer agreements that would have these type of. Special assessment penalties?
Most of our other development agreements are related to new construction and. That the city has, i- if there's money in it, there's a whole different type of situation with agreements, so. This was the only group that we really followed this format that I can think of.
I can think, I, that's what I thought, I thought that these were kind of an unusual set of development agreements that we entered into. Basically because we had acquired these Kalmbach properties and we wanted them redeveloped. And for the most part, that has happened except for these lingering issues. With basically a development group that's. On the verge of bankruptcy. So.
I make a motion, and my motion's gonna be to deny the waiving of the six thousand one hundred and twenty four dollars and eighty four cents, the non-performance penalty fee lien for the property of five sixty five Cedar Street.
Second. There's a motion and a second, we'll vote.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
No.
Dos?
No.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein? You're the deciding vote.
Um, to deny waiving it? I will not waive it, so that would be a yes. No?
Mark, I believe you're correct in what you're trying to say.
Do you wanna deny waiving it or you wanna waive it? You do not want them to have it waived, that was your motion, so then you would vote yes. So this motion fails, so that the uh waiver, uh wave, waiving?
No, motion carries.
This, yeah, that's.
It won't change.
Yes, the motion carries, which means that the waiver will not be issued. Okay? All right. Thank you for that discussion and uh, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Which is the Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Yes, um, so we discussed this uh at your last meeting. Um, essentially, our Parks Master Plan process started in December of two thousand and seventeen with a public information gathering session. Um, where we brought in members of the community to discuss some of their uh things they'd like to see in our Parks and Recreation uh programming and how they want to see our, uh, what they want to see in the future of Platteville. Um, we followed that up by a survey that was sent out. Um, survey, survey was conducted from January to March two thousand and eighteen, and then the Parks Forestry and Recreation Committee worked with uh those results and some of their own ideas. To come up with uh five goals and then outlined uh, sixty-three initiatives that they would like to see in our park system. Over uh the next general five-year period. Um, they voted on those and assigned those either a priority of high, medium, or low, and I would direct you to page uh thirty-three and thirty-four of the Parks Master Plan in your packet. Um, that kinda is a, a general overall summary of those initiatives. Um, this did pass the Parks Forest and Recreation Committee in May two thou- or two thousand and nineteen, um, so now it's up to you for action.
Okay, questions of Luke on the Parks Master Plan?
I think I asked this last time, but this is online, is that correct?
It is, yes.
Yeah, it's all platteville.org. I would move to approve the perks.
Second.
Parks and Rec Master Plan.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the Parks and Recreation Master Plan?
Second.
Yep, and a motion, and a second. Uh, Isaac, so we'll vote. Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein? Okay, uh, next, we have information and discussion items, the first of which is resolution forming the complete. Complete Count Committee, which is rather hard to say, but what Catherine?
Yes. So the census is a nationwide count of the country's populations that is mandated to occur every ten years by the US Constitution. And the twenty twenty census process will begin in March and continue through midsummer. Census representatives are reaching out to local governments to form and coordinate these complete count committees. To assist with outreach to hard-to-count populations. Um, I will be the staff liaison and I and the committee will go through training about the upcoming census and also various outreach methods. That will depend on the populations that we're targeting, um, to make sure that everyone's counted and they fill out the form next year. So having this complete count committee and making sure everyone's counted is important for funding and also representation at the local, state, and federal levels. And we're starting this now to avoid the holiday season, so.
Okay, anybody with questions on the Complete Count Committee? By the way, I do know that there have been local residents hired for the twenty twenty census already, a couple of people have told me that. They worked the twenty ten census and they now have jobs working the twenty twenty census already. I don't know if you knew that?
I did not, so that's good news.
So they are hiring people and so there will be, I believe when we met with the representative from the census, that that person told us there would be jobs. that that person told us there would be jobs, uh associated part-time jobs during this time period. So uh keep that in mind. And uh Catherine, I see your resolution here. Uh this is simply to form the count committee. It doesn't outline who's going to be on it. You'll bring that back to us at a later time?
I can bring back at a later time who will be on the committee, yes. We're still doing outreach to see who's wanting to be on it, so.
Is that city committee? Is that a city committee?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
There's no number to the resolution, except nineteen something XX.
Well, there'll be a number next time.
Eventually.
Cause it's on-
Next time.
Right, it's just information and discussion right now.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, next we have the conditional use permit for Rolling Hills Church, fifteen ninety-five West Main Street. Start with Joe.
Uh yes, thank you. So the Rolling Hills Church is requesting a conditional use permit to allow them to construct a church at that location, fifteen ninety-five West Main Street. So that's the far west e- end of the city where it uh where Main Street turns into County Highway B. Um they originally started this request back in April of two thousand eighteen, and they requested that the the approval take place in a couple of stages just to allow them more time to develop their plans and so forth and not have to pay for an engineer and architect to develop plans that may or may not get approved. So um when the council granted their their first part of the approval, it was basically a a conditional approval. There you approved the concept, you're okay with having a church at that location, um and which allowed them to proceed with the additional work. Uh they followed up with a certified survey map, uh which gr- uh created the five-acre lot that they're gonna be located on. And now they're coming in with the additional uh information on the the church building, the site design, the plans uh about the project itself for the final approval. So back in two thousand eighteen, the the council approved it with with several conditions, which some of them they've already met. One of the, there were a couple of items that in particular the council wanted to have more information on as this went forward. Uh one was there were some concerns about stormwater management on that property. Some of the property owners along Moonlight Drive were concerned that, you know, some of the runoff may impact them. So they have developed a a plan for addressing that, and it is gonna be maintained on-site or processed on-site according to the city regulations, and anything outfall beyond that will drain away from those properties. So onto undeveloped property uh to the south, so that will not be an issue. Um there was a uh at least a desire on the part of the council to have a discussion about sidewalk connections, connectivity. So the Safe Routes Committee has reviewed this. They basically, th- the information is in there um uh as far as their motions. It was a very lengthy discussion that they had over a couple of meetings, but essentially came that if it's gonna be required uh to provide it along Moonlight Drive and Creek Court, as that uh Creek Court is extended at a future date, that would be the recommendation for a location. Um one of the other conditions the council talked about was a a second access point. Uh we were assuming that their main access would be coming off Creek Court and then a second access off of West Main Street. Now that they've developed some additional plans as far as location, how they're gonna design it, they've decided they're actually gonna locate the church on the the far western portion of their property. So what they're asking now is to not have that requirement for a second access. Their primary access and only access if if they, from their standpoint, if the council approves, would be the driveway off of West Main Street, County Highway B. Uh the county has already approved the location for that driveway, um so that part has taken uh place as far as that approval. Um they just feel based on the location of that building, the size of the church at this point, and the fact that there's no other development proposed um in the vicinity of that church, that extension of Creek Court and the sidewalks to go along with it are really not warranted at this time. And uh frankly, the neighbors in that vicinity also do not desire to have that uh improvement made at this time. So um they would request approval of the the project without that secondary access requirement. So they, as I mentioned, they have provided the additional information, the building elevations, floor plan, site plan is on your packet. And this will be on for action at the next meeting. Any questions for me?
I have a question on the uh stormwater management plan. Have they made up the plan already, did you say?
They they came to me with an initial plan, and then um then they have this proposal to um limit the access point, and and so they needed to modify their parking a little bit and things like that. So they were, they went back and they were modifying the stormwater management plan. Plus, I had some comments to improve um improve their proposal. So I have not seen the the second iteration yet. Um but uh as Joe mentioned, uh with the building and the parking lot toward the west end of that five-acre parcel, the stormwater management facility would be over in that west area. And the discharge from that would be in a swale that runs toward the southwest away from the uh uh existing lots along Moonlight Drive and Flower Court.
Would there, would there be a detention pond? Is that proposed or not?
Um it would be a a retention pond slash large rain garden where they would uh, you know, do some infiltration and and allow the water to to uh either infiltrate or or slowly exit the pond.
I have a concern that uh water coming from this area not be sufficient to cause erosion on land which does not belong to them.
Understood.
Okay, in other words, we're adding more water, go in toward the Roundtree Branch, and uh that should be moving down there safely.
I understand.
So I think that should be part of the planning as far as uh will that be accomplished?
So. Uh so am I hearing, Howard, from you that the plan that we have, erosion control plan for Rolling Hills Church as in our packet, is not the current plan? Is this not the?
It's it's similar to what they will do, but it's it's not exact based on the um, they need to complete their calculations.
So.
So part of that plan is dependent on whether the council requires a second access or not. So they can't finalize the plan until they know what the requirements are for access and parking locations.
My question would be for the chief of uh the fire department, sorry. Um with only having the one access, do they still feel that's adequate to get the fire trucks down in case of an emergency fire?
And while he's walking up here, one of the recommended conditions that the the plan commission and the staff had made is that their final site plan have adequate maneuvering space on on property for the fire trucks to get in and out.
And that the fire department give written approval.
Correct.
Yep, so as long as there's just enough access where one entrance is fine, we don't need two to come in. We just need to be able to get the trucks around, so. And that will all be developed through the parking and wherever they decide to put the building and all that, so.
It's looking like both their parking areas are dead ends. Doesn't look like they have like a, say, a roundabout or a where they connect where a fire a fire truck could get in and out without making, say, a Y turn or U turn?
Yeah, sometimes we have to do that. Sometimes we have to back them out, some of the city streets that we have too. But, you know, we we'll try to make it work for us and and be accommodating to them as well, too, so.
That area, I don't know, what did the county say? That area between Highway B to the city is got a no, that you can't see over, and it's got a curve. And I was wondering what the plan is there. What's the county going to do? To slow traffic down at that corner so people can exit from the church parking lot safely?
The county um county commissioner, Dave Lambert, was at the plan commission meeting. Uh he did not have any uh, there was no discussion regarding slowing traffic or anything like that. What he did was, he he noted that the location of the driveway entrance on the very west end of the property is sufficiently far enough, it's far enough away from that curve that it, that there should be sufficient site distance uh for vehicles that are traveling a little bit in excess of the posted speed limit.
Uh we do have representatives from Rolling Hill Church here. If anybody has specific questions? Uh do-
Question I have is um, this is going to be a church without a school that meets five days a week? You have something like a Sunday school?
Um who wants to speak on behalf of the church?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lauren Montgomery. My address is four one zero three County Road B in Platteville, just about six miles up the road from the proposed building. Uh to answer your question, there is no plan at this point to have any sort of a school. Anything we do with a a Sunday school would simply be um essentially adjacent part of our regular Sunday morning service. We don't have any plans for any sort of of a church school or anything like that. That that's not even on the radar.
Do you have any plans, say, for a pickup of people to go to the church? Some churches have a, you know, use use of a van to pick up people?
Sure. Um obviously, at some point, we would love to have um, we would love to have a need. That's a problem we would like to have uh as it is now. Um the, given the location and given just the simple size of our church, it's only about a hundred people, uh there's no actual need for any sort of a pickup or any kind of a van, uh anything like that. That it's a problem we would like to have in the future, but it's not something that's on, again, not something on the radar right now.
Well, I look at that as something to take away the need for sidewalk.
Of the thirty-five, just to give you an idea, of the thirty-five families that currently attend our church, there's only one that's actually within walking distance. He's actually here with us tonight. The other thirty-four families are far enough out that we would drive in. Given the location at the extreme far west of town, unless there's another subdivision that's built essentially right around it, the odds of that number dramatically increasing to the point that a sidewalk makes sense is, the odds are pretty low. Platteville is is um, for the most part, Platteville churches are not walking churches. The, you know, with the exception of a few that are located in the heart of downtown. Uh even when we meet here in the hall, uh the only people, I think the only people that walk on a regular basis is my daughter, who lives in the Washington Street Apartments, so maybe one or two others, but that's about it.
Lauren, I see that your your development now is centered on the west side or the west westerly-
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
-half of this. Um I didn't ask the plan commission, what are your plans? How are you going to treat the other half of your lot?
Uh as of right now, there are no plans to specifically develop it. Um, you know, prairie reclamation is a, or some sort of, you know, more or less natural. We'll obviously keep it trimmed and, you know, keep the grass cut and that sort of things. But as of right now, there are no plans to do any development. We purchased this lot with the idea that we would have room to expand at some point down the road. But as far as as um our plans for doing anything with it, what you see is what you get right now. We're we're just trying to get the building built, and we'll worry about the rest of that far later.
What would be the requirements for the lot? Would they have to mow so so many times? I mean, for that portion of the lot, would they? Or maybe it's Howard. In terms of the mowing and maintenance of the rest. I've I've been asked that question. What's gonna happen to the rest of the lot?
It depends on, it depends on what they actually do with it. I- if if, as he discussed, it's going to be a uh natural prairie-type plantings, then that's that's one way of doing it. If they intend to to keep it um in turf grass or something like that, uh the ordinance says within four hundred feet of of a of a home or occupied building. So there's plenty of land here that that could be left in in a natural state if if they so choose.
I also asked about landscaping, your plans for landscaping around the church and-
Sure, uh I um, at risk of sounding flippant, we haven't gotten into the number of marigolds per square foot yet. We're we're not there. Uh our intent is not for the building to be ugly. There will be landscaping. I'm certain of it. I have no question of that. What that's going to look like at this point, what exactly, how exactly that's gonna be broken down, no clue. We're still trying to get the city's permission to put a building there.
Anybody with any other questions? Then this would move to action at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh next, item on our uh list of information discussion is the Planned Unit Development Amendment for UW Platteville's Sesquicentennial Hall. Uh Joe?
Yes, and this is a- actually an amendment because uh uh several years ago, back in two thousand and five, the the city a- approved the planned unit development for basically the entire campus. The the university had a a long list of improvement projects to multiple buildings that they were uh proposing to uh account for the tri-state initiative and the resulting enrollment increase. So uh basically, we've got through, all of those improvements have been made that were approved in part of that that initial plan. So now the university would like to, uh basically, an expansion of the engineering building for the Sesquicentennial Hall project was not on the plan, so they'd like to have that a- approved as an amendment to the PUD. So the the building is, as I mentioned, it's an expansion of the engineering building, which is on the corner of Southwest Road and Longhorn Drive. It'd be a three-story building addition, eighty-five thousand square feet. Uh include instructional space, laboratories, computer labs, maker and shop spaces, department faculty offices, student study spaces, and support functions. Um no residential uh rooms, contrary to what was mentioned earlier this evening. Um it will serve the mechanical, civil, and environmental engineering programs. The part that was mentioned earlier, there will be a loss of some parking with this project. There is a existing parking lot to the west of the engineering building now. Uh this project will be located, uh the building will be like located partially on where that parking lot is located. Uh the result will be a loss of sixteen parking spaces um from this lot. Uh they will have some other transportation-related improvements, however. Uh they're installing drop-off lanes on Longhorn Drive uh both sides to allow uh better access for buses and visitors, including the city's uh transportation system. Uh the buses transit system stops at that location. Uh they're also doing expanded bike parking at several locations surrounding the building. As I mentioned, it it is basically, it's an expansion of the existing building at that location. So this will be on for action at the next meeting as well. Any questions?
Any questions of Joe, and also we have, we do have a representative from the university in the audience. So Doug, if you, if there may be questions of you too, okay?
I have a question.
Oh, okay.
University or Joe? The addition of eighty-five thousand square feet of area for increased runoff, how is the increased runoff going to be collected and safely taken to the Roundtree Branch?
I'm Doug Stevens. I live at ten Preston Drive in the city of Platteville, and I work as campus planner at UW Platteville. As part of the project, we're developing a comprehensive stormwater management plan that addresses the NR one fifty-one DNR stormwater management requirements. Uh we will have a a small detention facility on the site to take care of the the hardscape. The water will go to that containment area, and then it'll be slowly released into the university's existing stormwater basins to the- to the north of the site and then slowly released into the Roundtree Branch.
You have no detention for that area as of yet?
We do.
But you're going to increase that or make another one?
We're going to modify it to accommodate all the hardscape on the site, including Engineering Hall existing, parking lot and then Sesquicentennial Hall hardscape as well.
Doug, tonight you heard.
Paul Alderson, yes.
And, and this results in the loss of sixteen parking spots. So, and the primary users of that, of that lot have been?
Primary users of the lot have been predominantly faculty with some commuting students.
And so, do you have a plan for these?
We do. What the university wants to do is reassess our existing parking lot infrastructure. We have approximately three thousand three hundred stalls on campus and we've noticed that there's excess stall capacity on the west end of campus. Do people know where the tiered lots are on the far west end of campus? On a day-to-day basis, we're seeing open lots. In that area, we've got some open lots in Memorial Park which we use as maybe long-term parking or discounted parking. What we want to do is examine our price structure for discounted parking rates for those more remote lots and do some reassignment of lots on our east end of campus, southeast end of campus to better balance supply and demand. So, it's more attractive for people to park, to purchase parking permits and to camp on the, or park on the campus parking lots proper.
What do you do about students that years ago used to move their cars from those dorms to other areas on the campus?
We have parking permits and when people buy the parking permits, you can buy a faculty-staff, faculty-staff permit. That's restrictive. You have to actually be faculty or staff to buy a permit in that category. Then we've got residence hall permits and you have to be in the residence halls to buy those permits and then commuter permits. So, if someone were to maybe try to game the system by, if you were a res hall student and you're trying to park in a commuter lot, our campus police force through their, their parking detail would quickly pick up on that because it's a permit of a different color. And then that person would likely be cited.
I guess I haven't paid attention, but the parking lot to the east of this or across the street, is that for faculty or is that for faculty and students, both?
Right now, the parking lot east of Longhorn Drive, I believe it's Parking Lot twenty-four, that is signed for residence hall parking. What we'd like to do is maybe transition that to become a faculty and commuter lot. Maybe two-thirds of the lot, lot might be designed faculty, the other third commuter. And then we would find another lot on the east, existing lot on the east side of campus for a res hall lot to kind of rebalance the demand and supply in that area of campus. And we'd look at the surplus capacity we'd have on the far west end of campus too.
You don't do any parking on Main Street as far as permits? We never approve that, that's correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
You have permit parking on Greenwood and University Drive, University Drive permit?
I understand, yes.
Other questions about Sesquicentennial Hall? Doug, I think you said groundbreaking, you're looking at?
November of twenty twenty.
So, it's a, it's a year down the road for the groundbreaking? Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is, which is what? Which is the City Assessor Services Contract. So, Nicola?
Thank you. So, the current contract for City Assessor Services ends on December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. And the current contract did include the citywide full revaluation and two years of annual maintenance. City staff drafted a request, a proposal for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty-two. And this proposal, which was reviewed by the council, included an annual review maintenance option and a market revaluation option. The annual maintenance option is the base level of assessment in which assessors can review only those properties with changes such as new construction, demolition, changes in the legal description and so on. The market revaluation option is the next level op of assessment in which assessors can review the value of parcels and, and can review every property in the city based on market data. But they would still physically inspect only properties with the changes described before. The market revaluation does enable the assessor to bring property assessments to market value and so therefore ensure that the school, county, city and technical college taxes are shared appropriately between property owners. The proposal request was published in the newspaper and in various other places and it was also sent to nine regional appraisal firms. The city received two proposals, one from Accurate Appraisal and one from Associated Appraisal Consultants. Staff reviewed the proposals and based on that review is recommending Accurate Appraisal for City Assessor Services with Option C, which is a blend program which provides annual maintenance assessment in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one and market revaluation in twenty twenty-two. There was a, provided in the packet, there was a tabulation of the two proposals and you can see there that the combined total for Option C from Accurate Appraisal is sixty-eight thousand four hundred dollars. And the equivalent proposal from Associated Appraisal Consultants was a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So, at this time, are there any questions from the council?
Questions and the proposals for appraisal services. And this would be for City Assessor for a three-year period from twenty twenty through twenty twenty-two.
We'd just like to let the council know that unfortunately I had a pre-planned vacation to see my son graduate from what we call boot camp and so I will be gone at the next meeting. If I can just add an hurrah there for anybody who's in the Marines. And, and so if there's any questions during the next couple of weeks prior to the next meeting, I would be glad to do my best to answer them.
So, it looks like we're looking at a difference of about sixty-six thousand six hundred between the two bids?
Is this the same company we've used in the past?
Yes, Accurate Appraisal is our current City Assessor. That's correct.
And this was our first contract with Accurate Appraisal, I believe?
Well, I believe we had another contract, but then during that contract, it was recognized that we needed a full revaluation so we asked them to price that for us.
And do you expect that they are completely equivalent proposals when there's that large of a price difference? You don't feel like the services are different?
I think there is a degree to which pricing can reflect maybe, maybe some aspects to the services provided, but the appraisal services are mandated and regulated by the state. So, there are minimums that have to be met and there's, there's procedures that have to be used by all assessors across the state.
They can meet those minimums and we are required to take the lowest bid?
Not required to take the lowest bid.
Any other questions? Okay, and as Nicola has said, she will not be at the council meeting next time and that this will be on for action at that meeting. So, if anybody has questions, please get them to Nicola in the next week or so before she departs for this wonderful ceremony and I can't say who, whatever it is that you said.
The Marine Corps.
Yeah, I don't do the Marine thing, so.
Marine Corps.
All right, we are done with the information and discussion regular items. We have a couple of work session items, a budget review doc to go through. And so, I guess at this point in time, we will go off to our table in the back to do that and.